Commissioner's Work Session, today is September 5th. Appreciate your attendance. We'll move right into the new business. First up, the presentation of application for parade and assembly. Global warming awareness planning and development director, Jameson Kenny. James?
Thank you Chairman. Before I get into this, I want to mention that the applicant has sent us an email requesting to pull the permanent permit or the application because they have decided to have the climate change rally in a different location as opposed to here at the courthouse. I received that at 1:47.
Okay, so request has been made to pull that application. What's the pleasure of the board?
Quick question, are they going to reapply with a new location or is it outside of Dawson County?
It's inside the city.
City Hall.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve withdrawal of the application.
Motion by Commissioner Gaines. Thinking by Commissioner Fossett. Hearing done, please vote. And that's approved, four of them, that's withdrawn. Next, we'll move on to number two, presentation of funding request for fire hydrants. Earth Service Director Danny Thompson. Danny?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. About a month and a half ago, Brooke Anderson from Edgewood Water contacted us. Obviously, Edgewood does various expansions for water services, sewer service throughout the year. So currently, what is advised is that they're running about three miles of 12-inch main out on Highway 136 east going back towards the Edgewood River. They have extended service on several secondary roads inside the county. Some of those roads consist of Herman Soze's, we overlook the circle of Cleve Wright Road. There's also some line readjustment in the area of Highway 9, Dawson Forest, due to the GDOC reconfiguration with the double round about that's going to be there. And they're also extending a 12-inch main going up perimeter Highway 9, terminating in front of the new subdivision for which the developer will obviously pick up from there and share the cost. What we are requesting at this time is eight new fire hydrants in the above listed areas. As you all know, fire hydrants is a critical part of the firefighting profession and with that it provides needed emergency services to our citizens in those areas. This is a total of about five to six miles of extension from Edgewood Water this year. That funding total amount comes to $27,029.
Questions for the chief? More to remember, we discussed putting a sum of money in a contingency, but the board decided that they wanted us here as they came about and so he'd be here today for that reason. And so, do you have any questions for him in reference to his request?
Now, this is the first we've done this year, is that right?
That is correct.
I guess obviously you've reviewed the locations and you feel comfortable that all those locations are important to have them there.
Correct. Commissioner Gaines, what Brooke and I typically do is when he puts in that call, he and I would get together, we would ride the roads of expansion, look at it, see where hydrants are needed. You know, when you look at the, you know, three miles worth of 12-inch mains out on Highway 136, there's some areas where there's, in that coverage, there's no houses. So, he's putting some of the T connectors in there for future taps down the road, but at this time, I don't feel it appropriate to come forward to the board and ask for hydrants in an area where there's no homes.
What about that Cleve Wright, is that the Cleve Wright that we're holding, is that up across from Ernie A yet now?
Yes ma'am, so there's currently three hydrants there now. What basically they're trying to do is tie in going back towards the Elliott Family side and out that way. So, it's really, this project's kind of tying up some loose ends where they've had mains that terminated midway down the road, like the Herman Soze's, the overlook area, same thing. So it's really just kind of for Edgewood on this project, tying up loose ends and making some better connections out there. And like I said, Cleve Wright, there are some pumps and everything in that area and obviously that's an area, anytime we can add hydrants on that side of Dawson County, we need every one that we can get.
Our new station we have out there, will we have a hydrant hookup close to that station? Not anywhere close.
Closest one, I think, actually, I wrote this up a few days ago, I think it's 2.6 miles back to Elliott Family. There's been a lot of discussion about that. I'm sure the video.
I'm sure you want to take it up there, but yes.
Quarter text.
What was the, I don't know when we started talking about hydrants, what was the total amount per, what was that total amount?
It seems like we negotiated that last year, your forla, fixed the amount, about $37,500 or something?
I don't have the actual number.
This is kind of about $33, $33,700.
Well, it's about $34,000, $34,000 or something changed.
But we're not getting charged for the Ts.
Correct. But what we have to remember is if we elect not to put hydrants in this area now, Edgewood goes ahead and drops the T connection. When we go back and tap it and turn around, I think that price is $5,400.
Five.
Correct.
Yeah, but have to dig it back up. Other questions for Dan?
Does that help any of the ISO ratings up there on Cleve Wright? Because it's a 10, isn't it a pocket right now?
Anytime we add hydrants, it increases because ISO looks at station location and then hydrant location.
So does that get that Cleve Wright out of the 10?
That area? Yes sir.
Really? Okay. That's pretty big.
Are the chicken houses out there?
There's a lot of chicken houses.
That's what I thought, I think we're selling.
I think that's identified by our rating as a station one, I believe.
Road miles is critical and I'd have to, I would have to go back.
Some of that, some of that over there on Gold Mine, some of those places, that other station will back that up there, bring that back in, yeah.
That's correct.
And they put one on Gold Mine, Brian Eaven out there. Just race them.
Is it in the oven or is it in the middle?
Kind of in the middle of some gravel park. I think they just did it, I don't know if it was something, a test of blowout or something, but.
Another question.
Pulling the fund balance.
That's the proposal. What was Vicky?
I could put a note at the bottom of the agenda request to potentially take that out of the contingency line.
Okay. All right.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you sir. Next up, we have presentation request for memorandum of understanding with Georgia Mercy Management AC concerning new grants management system. Dan?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this one's really kind of a formality. GMA is swapping over to a new process, it's a grant portal called EMA Grants. And so, all grants that we have through GMA will now go to this portal. So, GMA submitted the memorandum of understanding and for us to be able to access it and to continue with grants, we'll have to, you know, have the MLU in place to be satisfied that. There's no current grant that we're asking for, we're really just asking the board to move on the MLU as quickly as we possibly can because we do have several grant applications coming up and we just don't find ourselves getting behind on those.
Is it the same for everybody?
Yes ma'am, all 159 counties, EMA directors have to do this.
Okay. So ours is not different?
No ma'am.
Well, I guess that's another rein or another door.
If you want the money.
If you want the money.
Well, I want the money!
You want the money, that's it.
You can, I mean, we don't currently have grants coming up right now, but our next one is our EMPG grant.
Will it be good if we don't take them?
That'll be coming any day now, they'll release it any day.
If we vote on that or we don't take them, will it be good?
I think so, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Thank you sir.
Thank you.
Presentation of IFB number 332-19, Construction Services for the Senior Services Center, Community Development Block Grant, Public Works Director David McKee, and Senior Services Director Dawn Brooke. David, I guess you're starting to understand.
Yes sir, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. Possibly before this is over with, we will hear from several of us. It's our pleasure to bring before you the construction contract for the senior services building. I know we have been back and forth as a board on a number of different occasions over the last, really, two years about this very project. If you recall, in 2017, we received a donation from the Pauline Ivy Trust, roughly $945,000. We subsequently applied for a grant through DCA, CDVG block grant, and we were awarded $750,000 for that. We released the bid for construction services on April 11th. We received those bids back for the construction services and you'll recall, there was also the civil work, the vertical earth is currently under contract and is currently moving all the site work and everything for that. And as part of that project, there's also the pavilion, the field work and everything else. What we're bringing before you today is the actual construction, the general contracting of the senior center building itself. As for the past, recall, recall a month or so ago, the question was asked about this particular contract, it was over budget. For the past three months, I don't want to take very much credit for it, Brian and Dawn and James and everybody spent a lot of time working back and forth with both the architect, the proposed general contractors we have here, and then amongst staff trying to value engineer and get the best product that we can without losing the level of service that we have proposed and that we have extended to DCA and our CDVG block grant. We believe that what we are presenting today does just that. We do have a presentation that we'll go through real quickly, I think I hit some of those, some of those highlights. One of the biggest issues, I know the question always comes up, or not issues, but the question always comes up, we bid this according to policy and we received three bids from three different general contractors. One of the questions always comes up, why did we only receive three general contractors? One is the market. The market is driving several different issues here. One is the cost, that's what's driving the cost, the increase in costs. And number two, I think one of the driving factors here is the CDVG grant itself. There is a ton of paperwork, there's probably people behind me shaking their head. You can only imagine what federal paperwork is required for this, not just on our end but for the architect, the designers, as well as the general contractors. They're going to have to submit payment records and a lot more records than is required of a normal general contractor. So, that could also be added to the increased cost, I cannot say that for fact, but that could, I assume that's what, that's some of that is. What you see here on the screen is just some of the special terms and conditions that's required of that CDVG block grant. And again, I am not an expert of that, there are folks that are here that could talk to us more specifically about those requirements, but those are just some of those requirements that we have to follow for that. So, the typical construct, or scope of services as it related to this, the original plan was an 8,260 square foot building, stone masonry area, a lot of what you see at the pool house and the addition of the location of the gem out there. So, without going into a lot of detail about every bit of this, we, that's in general what we're trying to do is keep that same theme throughout the entire park. So that when you drive through the park, all the buildings look similar, everything looks similar. One thing to note, that was not part of, it is not part of the general contractor scope is the furniture fixtures and equipment. Furniture is not included in this price that we're discussing tonight. We look at some of the space usage and programming and individual programming and questions about the programs itself and how they'll be used on, we're certainly here to answer that, but large multipurpose space, kitchen, game room, office space, bathroom facilities, lobby, nurse's office, and then the rest of it room. I think we, hopefully everybody had the opportunity to go through some of the programs that's gone sad out there, so we'll have that room available in this new facility. I'm going to go back for just a second because I think I skipped over something that I think is important and has been a topic of question before. The current building will maintain and still be used by senior services and keep its current name, the Martin Weaver Senior Center. That's been a topic of, a subject of question and I want to make sure that publicly that we've addressed that. And then the new building would be named the Pauline Stevens Ivy Center Senior Life Center. So, I didn't want to just go right through that without getting that highlighted as Okay, so the offers that we received, we see three different offers as we talked about earlier, diversified construction of Georgia, Scrubs and Grizzle Contracting, and then Carol Daniel Construction Company. You can see the range in value of those ranging from $2.2 million up to $2.7 million. And what you see appears to be in red here is diversified contracting and we'll talk a little bit more about diversified. And I talked a little bit about the value engineering over the last three months, the staff has done. And we work directly with diversified contracting, the architect and staff in trying to make this number fit without cutting specific services that we projected to offer. So now, a little bit about the reduced scope and what we've done. Off the cuff, we went from $2,242,000 to the negotiated contract total cost is $1,969,853. Again, what that cost does not include is the furniture. A little bit about what was cut, what was, what those scope changes were is right there below. There was a staff conference room, that was, if you recall, it was sort of an octagon shape off the front corner of the building. That was removed, reducing the square footage of the building. We removed the metal roofing and went to architectural shingles. There again, that's just, what we were looking at is not necessarily items that was $400, $500, we were trying to look at big ticket items. We removed the canopy from the breezeway. That was a breezeway, canopy breezeway cover that went from the existing senior center over to the new senior center. The option is still there, we've looked at long-term and I think Dawn addressed some of that in your budget, in your current budget that we just presented. There are some other options and we've left that option in tying those two in together. We still have that ability. The doors are still there, the sidewalk's still there, everything's still there, just not the cover.
At some point in time, the way this is going to be built, it could be added?
Yes ma'am. Yes ma'am. We removed the second sidewalk closest to the road, that was just two sidewalks, duplicate of sidewalks there, so again, we looked at every option there. Covered the entire building with hardy plank instead of a brick and the stone beside, so we've done some additional hardy plank, still a non-fabulous material, but it's not the brick. That was a fairly substantial cost there. In the multipurpose room, there was a vaulted ceiling essentially in the multipurpose room and it was more architectural, there was some windows up in the vault. It was as much aesthetic as it was open feel, open air as anything else, but that was removed. The ceiling height matches everything else. We adjusted the interior doors from a commercial grade to a residential grade. I don't want you to think that that is cheap doors, that they're going to get bumped and a hole be knocked into them, they are still comparable doors, it's just a lower grade door than what was originally spec. Windows, for example, vinyl to high-quality PVC, there again, we're still talking about a 20 or 30-year product and we're not talking about something that's going to become an issue. Again, flooring, countertops, equipment, that was kitchen equipment and storage cabinets, that's fairly routine millwork that was adjusted to be comparable. And then I just briefly talked about that transom that was in the multi-use room that was in that vaulted ceiling area, let some natural light in, we still have windows for natural light in that multi-use room, it just removed those transom glazing above the vault. You can see a rendering of the building there. So staff's recommendation is that we enter a contract with diversified construction for the negotiated cost. There is the remainder of the original fund, the donation funds and the CDVG funds, there is an overage of $501,556. This right here says the board's discretion, I believe Vicki and Dave and I have all had a lot of general discussion about where does that additional monies come from. What our recommendation is, we don't have to make that decision today, we will not leave that additional monies for that contract until July or August or even September of next year. So we will have this year's audited numbers completed and we will have a number of different options that we can do the additional monies from. One being fund balance?
Yes.
Fund balance following this year's audited numbers. Number two, the money could be borrowed and that's our options at that time. What we're going to continue to do through this process is save every dollar we can so that when we get to that June-July point of next year, we will then come back before the board and make a recommendation of how we finish funding that. And really what that boils down to is if we elect at this point to borrow the money, it's difficult to get lenders to make that decision to borrow money a year out from today. And we wouldn't use that money, so we don't want to, certainly don't want to make payments on something we wouldn't utilize until that point. So, there is some additional expenditures there, it's the board's discretion, we can add into this the furniture, but again, I think we'll bring that before the board at a later time when we have the accurate numbers for that. And then you'll also know, as part of this, there's no contingency for unforeseen conditions here. And I would request that the board approve this and approve up to a $10,000 contingency. $10,000 is not very much in the grand scheme of things for this, but that will give us something without having to come back to this board for every $500 overage or $1,000 overage. And I'll attempt to answer any questions as will our team that's here with me.
Questions for Dan?
If we go down the path of borrowing, there's, I think the response, there's responsible ways of borrowing money and this is an example, I think, where it does make sense because we're getting so much in grant money and so much in donation money to be able to move forward. The thing, and I'm looking for feedback, is if we take off, if we're going to borrow and pay it back potentially with squash that's coming up, and you know, we renegotiate that next year and potentially add it into that, are we shooting ourselves short knowing that we're probably got a 12-month gap before having to borrow to get it back in the squash on a metal roof versus asphalt shingles? As we know, asphalt shingles are not going to last for my, from what I understand, nearly as much as a roof would. That's one of my questions. And the other one is the breezeway not being covered, does that limit our ability to utilize both buildings efficiently when there is weather? And so, the other parts that you value engineered out, I think are very valid and good ways to cut where we won't see an impact in services or longevity potentially of the structure itself, other than the metal roof potentially and that covered breezeway. But I guess what I'm saying is if we go down the path of potentially borrowing it, I'm not adverse to going ahead and including those back in if it's going to give us a longer life of the roof and it's going to give us more usability of the facility itself with the breezeway being covered.
What's the difference in the cost of, now I like the look of a shingle bed, I don't, which last summer, do you know what's the difference in the life of a shingle?
The shingle roof that's proposed is a 25-year product, we all know.
And so what about, I mean, the 10, sometimes they get to looking terrible.
It's a commercial metal and the difference was $52,000 between metal and shingles. And as we were just, we were at $2.2 million, we were just trying to figure out ways to cut costs to bring, to present it to the board of commercials, but I personally would prefer metal, it is long-term, it lasts a lot longer and with a commercial metal, it tends to fade less than you would a residential metal, so that's why we went with the shingle.
But how long? You said the other was 25.
I'm just guessing out loud, the shingles are supposed to be guaranteed 20 to 25 years, that's not necessarily the case depending on the wind. I would say that metal would be closer to 35 to 40 years if it's installed properly, so another additional 15 years, I'd say.
Do we have a cost for the breezeway?
Yes, the breezeway cost was $42,000.
Maybe somebody donate some money.
And I don't want any misconceptions about the, so the drawing that you're seeing up here on the screen right now, that is a new rendering with a lot of, a lot of things taken out, which includes that conference room. This is the side entrance, so to the right will be the parking lot. So if you look up front on the left, that is where that conference room was. Can you go into the slides of the old rendering? Because I noticed his faucet, you had some looks on your face. Okay, so this is a picture of the original rendering of the building. If you can see, the metal ran up front, that's where the conference room was, and then it went down to the breezeway and at the far end was the little, I guess I call it a portico, whatever, that connected the two buildings together. So, when we put in for the CDVG grant, we put in there that we were going to have a breezeway. It concerns me a little bit that we might not have that breezeway and we decided as a team to take it out for our cost savings. But I put it in my capital expense to go ahead and add that in there and we discussed this as a team, it might be something we wanted to add, go ahead and add it now and include it like Mr. Gaines had stated, just because I think that's very important, that was something that we brought to the attention, our seniors brought to the attention of us, how am I going to get back and forth and they could walk when it's uncovered, what, four or five months out of here?
I say I get confused about this out here.
We threw that for three or four years, how about we? And I totally, I totally agree with that too, but you know, that just is one of my concerns is that we don't have it in there, the negativity that we're going to get back because the first renderings does show it and when we did everything with the CDVG and discussed it with our seniors and we did our public comment there, you know, it was there and we said we were going to have a breezeway, so you know, Commissioner Gaines did bring that up about whether we added in there and I know you said later, you know, do I know it's going to be used 100% of the time by everyone there? No, I don't. But it's just, it's just a worry for me that we might have to add it later or we could go in like we said and add it in now.
Look, we had another discussion, I'm sorry.
You know, I think as Commissioner Gaines said, Commissioner Fossett said, obviously, thus looking at having to come up with some finance and options anyway, and we're looking at $500,000 because it's not something you can vote down because you don't get the $750,000. So that, and that's not out there forever because that's got a timeframe associated to it, so we've got to do something with that. And as we've talked about, borrowing is obviously an option and if we borrow and do these two other projects, I don't have a problem with that. Or if we were going to do that, I would add the furniture into that as well because you can't have a building with nothing in it, otherwise you've just got a building. So I would add that, I would, I would say that we need to consider that a way, and we don't have to do that obviously now, that furniture piece of it, we can do that when we consider the borrowing or if we're lucky enough to sell some of this property that we've had for years and years and years and years and years and years, it's not any value to the county, we might not have to borrow, we might have money on hand at that particular time. But I think we look at all the aspects of every bit of that, especially when we get to that, as you say, borrowing phase and we're not going to be there for 12 months or longer, however long it takes to build this facility.
Some of the other, just information for discussion, so two other items that were discussed when we were valuing this dance, CBG only allows us to go over 10% of the total project. CBG only allows us to go over ten percent of the total project value from the beginning. We are at nine point nine, nine point eight percent of that overage at this negoti, nine point what?
Four-four.
Nine point four-four, I was over. So we're nine point four-four at the negotiated cost, so taking the roof out and taking the breezeway out was also calculated into not going over ten percent, having to go back to DCA. I don't know what that process is, I have no idea what that value is, how long that process takes. Also wanna address timing. Mr. Chairman just hit on this, we have to have that building fully functional October the tenth of next year. Our contractors telling us it's gonna take them nine to ten months to build it, so we back into that, we need to, we need to be starting tomorrow, correct? And not tomorrow, we do have time to refrain this forward to the board as standard procedures, we don't have to have that answer now. So that, those all, those were all discussions that happened and could be added. We even talked about a different type of breezeway between the two, similar to what the schools use to cover their sidewalks and connect to those, so we've looked at a bunch of different options for breezeways. So there even, there even is a cheaper breezeway option than what's proposed here with the block and the rock and the temperature.
Yeah, James actually, Talbot went up to the school, and if you'll look at the New Career Academy, you know, they have a breezeway that goes all the way down, crosses in front, and that was a price of about thirty-five thousand dollars. James found out how much it was per square foot, and that's a nice look at breezeway. Is it similar to the one we have up here, James, or totally different?
It's a little nicer.
A little nicer?
But I wouldn't stick to that thirty-four thousand dollars to come and go.
Yeah, we know that, yeah.
So.
That's today's price.
Yesterday's.
Yesterday's price, yes, ma'am.
Should've been here.
Well, I can answer this question. I know we got the timeframe, and we're talking about ten percent here, and we're nine point four-four now, and I'm sure I don't wanna deal with DCA, because changing DCA is probably thirty, forty-five day, find out anything, if you're lucky enough to find it out in thirty to forty-five days.
It could be.
Depending on, I don't know how much complication that's gonna be. So if we add in the breezeway, and we add in, went back to the metal roof, and that put us over ten percent?
Yes.
And we can't do that right now, so we would need.
Which one could we do?
Could we do the not breezeway?
Two million eighty-nine thousand was eleven point six-five, just to.
Adding eighty-nine thousand more?
Right.
So we could do one or any other.
If that one nine six nine went to two million eighty-nine thousand, that's at eleven point five-five percent.
We didn't be there.
Right, so you can't be more than ten.
What would that number be at ten percent?
Mr. Chairman?
I hadn't really.
We can run that calculation before our next meeting. My advice would be, my recommendation would be if it's this board's desire to have both, that we include the metal roof in this contract. We close out the CDBG grant, and then we can.
Then we can do the breezeway. Absolutely, yeah, you wanna put the metal roof on top of the other one.
Correct, that's, that's my advice.
We need to make sure that falls in that point five-six percent that we have left. But is that a valid thing for us to look? Talbot, that's a question for you, I mean, if we could spend, if we had the flexibility to spend an extra fifty grand, is that good value for what we're getting versus the asphalt shingles?
It's a tough question, because I understand that the seniors need the breezeway as well, you know, with the, with the.
I'm not saying we won't do the breezeway later, but outside of the scope of this, I mean, is the, just talking about the roof itself.
Well, I obviously wanted a metal roof all along, and a metal roof's gonna last longer, I'd feel better about it. It's just an option of what y'all choose to do, breezeway or metal roof. For me personally, metal roof, but Don may feel different, and it's her building, so.
I think we can get the breezeway built in outside of this scope.
Afterwards.
Well, not after, I mean, outside of, yeah.
Of the contract.
Get it done before you open, but outside of the contract.
We are fine with that.
After it's closed, that'd be great.
Right. Instead of.
And I think it's obvious that it's gonna outlast the shingle, I mean, that's pretty obvious.
And it'll go along with everything else there that is, I'm assuming the pavilion probably, Matt will have a metal roof, or pavilion will probably have a metal roof.
Yes, ma'am.
And so it'll go along with everything else that's been constructed there and redone recently.
This one, you got the shingle. How old is that steel roof?
Sure it's been there, and we haven't changed that roof on the current twenty-five years.
I think it was Dom and Manny was here, and I think it was like fifteen years ago.
So it has been replaced?
Yeah.
Okay.
But when we get ready to replace it, we could match it up with the metal roof.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other questions for the team?
You know, sometimes it is smarter, if we can, to spend more money at the start.
Absolutely.
Instead of having this hanging over us, oh my goodness, in twenty-five years.
You're wrong.
Oh, I mean, that, I don't think that's good news.
Yeah, that's why I needed to take it off. Yeah. Oh, yeah. All right, so I'd say we work on getting the roof metal again, and then we'll deal with the other thing outside of this. See if we can get in that ten percent, so we don't have to deal with DCA.
Melissa?
If my head's thinking right, didn't, Brian, didn't we figure out, 'cause I just remembered this, that it wasn't even eleven thousand dollars that would take us up to nine point nine, right?
Yeah.
So that tells you right there that we can't even do that. But I could go ahead in the morning, email Brent Allen, who is the manager of the CDBG grants up at the community affairs, and just kinda fill him out of what he says, because we'll still have time for the nineteenth.
Because I worry about the timeframe.
Right. He's usually really good about responding pretty quickly, that's why I like going directly to him, since he's the manager.
Eleven thousand dollars would take us to what?
Nine point nine.
Nine?
Nine point nine.
That one.
So that's why I think I should probably go ahead in the morning and just at least reach out to him casually.
Make sure it's not gonna be a sixty-day process.
Right, and just see what they say.
And will we give them a better product? I mean, I couldn't imagine them not going along with that, giving them a better product with what they're gonna.
Well, I don't have, I don't doubt that they will go along with it, but how long's it gonna take to make up their money?
Right.
Well, we do have some time, obviously, before we're gonna need roof, so we can enter into a contract and then change, do a change order if it's this board's desire for the metal as we proceed. So I think the important takeaway is on the nineteenth, we need a decision.
Move both.
Right. And David and I already had the conversation that the donations is in a interest-bearing account, so that's already gonna keep growing, so we, I need to let them know that anyway, and might as well just go ahead and kinda fill it out what the process is.
Yeah, see what the process is, see how elongated it is. It might be simple, fair enough.
Like an email. A lot of things happen in just an email, so hopefully.
It makes sense, it's not anymore.
Have you worked with this diversified people before?
Have not, we did do extensive reference checks, we did get both back that they do, they do a good product. We did get one negative reference, just full disclosure, and the negative side of it was that it took too long. They did a good product, it just took too long. We've stressed to them that timing is of the essence, this absolutely cannot take too long because the effect is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Did Carol Daniel build the school?
They did, they do a lot.
They built everything.
They're big companies.
You said we had the October tenth?
October the tenth.
If we pass this on September nineteenth, we gonna have a little over a year.
That's correct.
Twelve months and ten days.
And they're very well aware of that, they have been stressed over number, that time of.
Is that, is there penalties in their contract?
Yes.
That will cover damages.
Five hundred dollars a day.
It's not gonna cover the total seven hundred and fifty thousand if for some reason that we were outside of that. So the way the CDBG grant process works, once we get to a point where we realize we may need an extension, then we have to ask CDBG at that point. We can't ask them that.
No.
What we have to do is we have to take to them and say, hey, we've had thirty rainy days, we've had this, this, and this, we need an extension. So it does us no good to go ask now, no. And internally, our team has already addressed that, and Brian is gonna be our project manager on this, and we're taking, you know, keeping daily logs, so if we have to have that, we'll take the day necessary to that.
So in reference to this, do we have it great? Is it done?
Very close.
Ready to go?
The pad will be ready when the contract gets started, yes.
Okay. So we pass this on the nineteen, what days he gonna stop?
Twenty.
Twenty.
October first. Gotta have the insurances and the guidelines.
All right, so we do have twelve months and ten days, I was right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have presentation, two thousand nineteen county surplus list, Fleet Service Director Shannon Harv.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I believe I have a little easier agenda.
Thank you.
You'll get us some money?
And we got a hundred thousand dollars.
That's our goal, is to bring money in with this, yes. Go, go, I'll get the money.
Get it from Shannon, he's gonna sell a lot.
He's got an ice maker and a Billy Goth blower.
But there's certain items on the list that I supply to you guys, it goes anywhere from vehicles and equipment to bleachers to cardiac, to feed the layers. I'm planning to have this sale in October, we'll advertise through all of our legal organs to try to, and through our social media, to let all of our citizens know, so they'll have a chance to bid on their equipment. And we plan on having this sale in October. And I did notice that there was two items that I overlooked on this list, I wanna go ahead and mention, I'll get you an updated list. The remainder of the Dollar General building still, that was here at this site, we wanna get rid of that, and the AC units from the sheriff's office.
Is there value in those either?
Well, that is one of the other things that I wanted to discuss, if we, we will move on go deals, stuff that you think we're not selling go deals, has sold, but if things that don't, I would like to go ahead and ask for permission to either sell that as scrap metal, or take it to the transfer station for disposal, whichever is more appropriate.
Okay.
And the staff, I'd like to recommend that the board approve this list for disposal with a couple items added on go deals, and to dispose of the non-sell items for either through scrap or trash.
Questions for Shannon? So we have a two thousand fourteen, five-year-old Dodge Charger with a hundred thousand miles, the engine blew up?
It's, yes, well, it's go around number two, it's actually had an engine already. The lifters had a bad run of lifters, they fell when you repair it, they usually fell again, which is the case on this one. And it has a couple other wiring issues and things, it's just more repaired than it's worth.
Wow. Tell me, what is a highway? I know it's not a street.
A high, which one?
You got two of them.
The two highways, the E twenty-twenty XTs are the old solid sprayers that was used in the other part of that, and the other one is a.
But it is used on the highway.
Yes.
All right. I thought, well, I gotta ask what that is. Questions, other questions for Shannon? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we have discussion of Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, two thousand nineteen Legislative Leadership Conference voting delegate. Received a letter from ACCG wanting to know who's going to be our voting delegate. You have a copy of that letter from Mr. Dave Wills. I asked Kristen, I said, Kristen, is anybody going to this here leadership meeting that's already signed up, is on this board? Well, the only person going is Commissioner Seiderfield, so my recommendation to you is that he be.
I think I gotta change it plenty of.
Too late. So my recommendation to you would be him, because he's the only one going. And I also recommend that we move that to the voting session at six o'clock, because this has to be in by the thirteenth, so that Kristen will fill out that form and send it in, giving him the authority to vote.
Congratulations.
Well, he is getting his plaque, so he has a reason to go down there.
Okay.
For his commissioning. Train. All right, anybody got any questions about that, or looking volunteer to be the representative? Right at half, those are the team.
I'm right with you.
Yeah. County manager report.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, good afternoon. I'd like to remind you of the annual Patriot Day service. This year's event will be hosted by the sheriff's office, it will begin at eight-thirty AM September the eleventh at the sheriff's office. It's nearly time for our annual shore sweep. As you know, this event brings together any of our county organizations and departments to capture this guard degree around the shorelines of the War Hill Park area. This year's shore sweep is coming up on Saturday, September the fourteenth, and will be held from eight AM to one PM. We're proud to announce that we will host a groundbreaking for the new fire station eight, to be located on Sweetwater Juno Road, and that, we of course invite the board and the public to this event, which will begin at two PM Tuesday, September the seventeenth. And then finally, I'd like to introduce the newest member to our Parks and Recreation staff, Caleb Rameloff, please stand for a second. Caleb is the sports programs manager. He is in his third week on the job, and has gotten off to a great start in helping organize our fall sports, including baseball, softball, soccer, and football. Caleb holds a sports management degree from the University of Minnesota, and has previously worked with Forsyth County Parks and Rec, and well as the Gwinnett Strikers. That's your position on the board, thank you. Wherever it hurts.
Questions to the county manager? County attorney?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I do not have a public report tonight, but I do have some executive session items.
And that would be under what category?
Um, all litigation, or potential or threatened litigation.
Litigation. Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Gaines, taken by Commissioner Seiderfield, discussion. Here now, please vote. And that's approved for over, it'll take about five minutes, and then we'll meet in the executive session. Thank you for your attendance, and you're welcome to come back at six o'clock for our vote.